Okay, hello, I'm going to open the hearing now. Let the record show that the time is 6:05 and the public hearing is now officially open. Note that we will be recording this meeting. This hearing is for the renewal of the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Discharged to Surface Water Combined Sewer Overflow Permits for Joint Meeting of Essex and Union Counties Waste Water Treatment Plant and the City of Elizabeth. We use the acronym NIGPTES in referring to the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Program. My name is Joe Manick, I am the Hearing Officer, and I am the Section Chief in the Bureau of Surface Water and Pretreatment Permitting in the Division of Water Quality at the Department of Environmental Protection, otherwise referred to as the Department or NJDEP. Jonathan Laquetron is an engineer within our bureau, and he will be providing instructions on how to provide testimony today, while Josie Castaldo is the case manager for both permits and will provide an overview of the subject permits. Here today are many NJDEP staff, including Susan Rosenwinkel, Assistant Director of the Division of Water Quality, and others who are part of the CSO program or part of other NJDEP programs. I will now be providing some general information about the public hearing process, which will take about four minutes. Marcelo Gracia will then present his information in Spanish. We will then provide an overview of Microsoft Teams and a short summary of permits in English and then in Spanish. This introductory information should take about 20 minutes in total. As established in the NIGPTES regulations at the New Jersey Administrative Code at 7:14A Subchapter 15, this is a non-adversarial public hearing, which means that the department is here to listen and take testimony as part of our regulatory process. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the interested public, including the affected communities, with an opportunity to be heard on these proposed draft permit actions. The department will be accepting verbal and written statements today. Please note that both verbal and written statements have equal weight, and if someone is not comfortable speaking and just has a written statement prepared, they can submit them electronically where they will receive equal weight with verbal testimony. The email address for written comments is dwq underscore dswp at dep.nj.gov. We will now add that address to the chat. The purpose for this hearing is to receive your comments and concerns. The department will respond to all significant and relevant comments, both verbal and written, in response to comments document, which will be issued as part of the final NIGPTES permit decisions. The permatees and each person who has submitted comments will receive an electronic copy of the final decision document, provided you give us your email address. We will also provide a copy to anyone who requests it, whether or not you submitted comments. Please be sure to leave your email address in the chat or send it to dwq underscore bswp at dep.nj.gov if you want to receive a copy. Please note that the public comment period will end at 11:59 PM on July 14, 2023. If you'd like to provide verbal comments today, please put your name, organization, and email address in the chat, and we will call your name when it is your turn. When I call you, please clearly state and spell your first and last name for the record. We will have a court reporter assigned to transcribe the recorded testimony. If speakers are speaking on behalf of a particular organization, we ask that you identify that organization. We want to hear from everybody, and we want to give everybody here the opportunity to speak. In light of time limitations, I am asking each speaker to limit their testimony to five minutes. Individual speakers may testify once until we hear from every person who is here and wishes to give testimony. If time permits, and there is an opportunity at the end of the hearing and a person wants to testify for a second time, we will do our best to accommodate you. We are asking that all speakers and members of the audience respect the right of each person to be heard and refrain from any behavior that could interfere with the presentation of testimony. This hearing will end at the close of testimony or at 8:00 PM, whichever comes first. The same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by one of our staff, Marcelo Gracia. After that, we will turn the discussion over to Jonathan Laquetron, who will provide an overview of Microsoft Teams. After that, Josie Castaldo will give some factual information regarding the NIGPTES permits. Marcelo?
Hola. Abriré la audiencia en este momento. Deje que registro muestre que la hora es 6:05 y la audiencia pública ya está oficialmente abierta. Tengan en cuenta que grabaremos esta junta. Esta audiencia se lleva a cabo por la renovación del permiso para descarga a aguas de superficie del desbordamiento de alcantrillado combinado del Sistema de Eliminación de Descargas de Contaminantes de Nueva Jersey para la planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales de joint meeting de los condados Essex y Union y la ciudad de Elizabeth. A menudo, usaremos el acrónimo NJPDS cuando nos referimos al Sistema de Eliminación de Descargas de Contaminantes de Nueva Jersey. Mi nombre es Joe Manick, soy el oficial de la Audiencia Pública y el jefe de sección de la Oficina de Permisos de Aguas y de Superficie y Pre-Tatamiento de la División de Calidad del Agua en el Departamento de Protección Ambiental, también denominado el Departamento o NJDEP. Jonathan Laquetran es un ingeniero dentro de nuestra oficina y brindará instrucciones sobre cómo dar testimonio hoy, mientras que Josie Castaldo es la administradora de casos para los dos permisos y presentará una descripción general de los permisos pertenentes. También hay aquí muchos empleos de NJDEP, incluyendo a Susan Rose, su gerente de la División de Calidad del Agua y otras personas que son parte del programa CSO o de otros programas en NJDEP. Ahora, brindaré información general sobre el proceso de la audiencia pública, lo que tomarán unos cuatro minutos. Luego, Marcelo Gracia presentará esta información en español. A continuación, proporcionaremos una descripción general de Microsoft Teams y un resumen breve de los permisos en inglés y luego en español. Esta información introductoria tomará unos 20 minutos en total. Como se establece en las regulaciones de NJPDS, del Código Administrativo de Nueva Jersey, 714A Subcapítulo 15, esta es una audiencia pública no content social, lo cual significa que el departamento está aquí para escuchar y tomar testimonio como parte de nuestro proceso regulatorio. El propósito de esta audiencia es brindar al público interesado, incluidas las comunidades afectadas, la oportunidad de ser escuchados con respecto a esas actividades de los borradores de permisos propuestos. El departamento aceptará declaraciones verbales y por escrito el día de hoy. Tengan en cuenta que las declaraciones por escrito y las verbales tendrán la misma importancia. Así que, si alguien no se siente cómodo de hablar y solamente tiene una declaración por escrito preparada, puede enviarla de forma electrónica y se dará la misma importancia que a su testimonio verbal. El correo electrónico para enviar comentarios por escrito es dwq-bswp@dp.nj.gov. Ahora, añadiremos el correo al chat. El propósito de esta audiencia es recibir tus comentarios y preocupaciones. El departamento responderá a todos los comentarios significativos y pertenientes, tanto verbales como por escrito. En un documento respuestas a comentarios que se publicará como parte de las decisiones finales sobre los permisos del NJPDS. Los permisionarios y todas las personas que hayan presentado comentarios recibirán una copia electrónica del documento con la determinación final, siempre que nos hayan indicado su correo electrónico. También entregaremos copias a quienes lo soliciten, aunque no hayan enviado comentarios. Asegúrense de dejar su correo electrónico en el chat o de enviarlo a dwq-bswp@dp.nj.gov si quieren recibir una copia. Tengan en cuenta que el periodo para enviar comentarios públicos terminará el 14 de julio de 2023 a las 11:59 PM. Si desean presentar comentarios públicos de manera verbal hoy, escriban su nombre, organización, y correo electrónico en el chat, y los llamaremos por su nombre cuando sea su turno. Cuando los llame, digan y determine su nombre y apellido con claridad para el registro. Tendremos un taquigrafo judicial asignado para entreescrivar el testimonio grabado. Si alguien hablara en representación de una organización, le pedimos que identifique la organización. Queremos escuchar a todos y darles la oportunidad de hablar aquí. Debido al tiempo limitado, les pido que en su testimonio no exceda los cinco minutos. Cada uno solamente podrá hablar una vez hasta que escuchemos a todas las personas que estén aquí y desean dar testimonio. En caso de que el tiempo los permita y sea posible hacerlo al final de la audiencia, si una persona desea declarar por segunda vez, haremos todo lo posible para permitírselo. Pedimos que todos los que hablen y los miembros de la audiencia respeten el derecho de cada persona presente a ser escuchada y que eviten las conductas que puedan interferir con la presentación del testimonio. Esta audiencia terminará cuando concluyen los testimonios o a las 8 PM, lo que ocurra primero. Esta misma información que acabo de leer ahora se haría en español por uno de nuestros empleados, Marcelo Gracia. Después, le daremos la palabra a Jonathan Laquetran, que quien presentará una descripción general de Microsoft Teams. A continuación, Josie Castaldo dará información factual sobre los permisos del NJPDS.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Laquetron, and I will be speaking to you about commenting during the public hearing. In order to inform the NJDEP Hearing Officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony, move your cursor around to open the Teams meeting toolbar, which will appear near the bottom center of your screen. Click on the chat icon to open the meeting chat box on the side screen. Type your full name and the name of your organization that you represent in the type a new meeting, new message field at the bottom of the meeting chat box. When entering this information, use the following format: first name, last name, organization, and email address. See below example. Click the send icon or press enter on your keyboard to submit your message and notify the NJDEP Hearing Officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony. To unmute your microphone to submit your testimony, reopen the Teams meeting toolbar. If you are muted, the mute icon appears in the toolbar. Click on the mute icon to unmute your microphone. The mute icon will change to a microphone icon. Begin your verbal testimony. To mute your microphone after submitting verbal testimony, open the Teams meeting toolbar. Click on the microphone icon to mute your microphone. The microphone icon will change to a mute icon. In order to turn your video feed during the public hearing, open the Teams meeting toolbar. Click on the disabled camera icon to turn your video feed on. The disabled camera icon will change to the active camera icon. To turn off the video, click the active camera icon. The camera icon will change to a disabled camera icon. If you're using a phone, you can hit star six to mute and unmute. The same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Marcelo Gracia. After that, Josie Castaldo will provide an overview of permits that were issued.
Hola, mi nombre es Jonathan Laquetran, y les estaré hablando sobre cómo comentarlo ante la audiencia pública. Para informar al oficial de la audiencia pública de NJDEP sobre su interés en dar testimonio verbal, mueve su cursor para que aparezca la barra de herramientas de reuniones de team en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Haga clic en el icono de chat para abrir el meeting chat a un lado de su pantalla. Escríbe su nombre completo y el nombre de la organización que represente y su correo electrónico en el campo que dice "Type a new message", escriba un mensaje nuevo, en la parte inferior del meeting chat. Cuando escribes esta información, use el formato nombre más apellido más organización más correo electrónico. De al ejemplo abajo. Haga clic en el ícono de enviar o presione la tecla enter en su teclado para enviar su mensaje y notificar al oficial de la audiencia pública sobre su interés en dar testimonio verbal. Para activar su micrófono para presentar su testimonio verbal, reabra la barra de herramientas de reuniones de teams. Si su micrófono está silenciado, si ve el icono de micrófono silenciado en la barra de herramientas, haga clic en el icono para activar su micrófono. El icono cambiará al micrófono activado. Empiece a dar su testimonio verbal. Para silenciar su micrófono después de presentar su testimonio verbal, abre la barra de herramientas de reuniones de teams y haga clic en el icono del micrófono para silenciarlo. El icono del micrófono cambiará al icono de micrófono silenciado. Para activar su cámara durante la audiencia pública, abre la barra de herramientas de reuniones de teams y haga clic en el icono de la cámara desactivada. Para activar su video, el icono de la cámara desactivada cambiará al icono de la cámara activada. Para apagar su cámara, haga clic en el icono de la cámara. El icono de la cámara cambiará al icono de la cámara desactivada. Si se ha conectado por teléfono para activar y silenciar su micrófono, por favor oprima el asterisco seis. Esta misma información que acabo de leer se haría en español por Marcelo Gracia. Después, Josie Castaldo presentará un resumen de los permisos que se han otorgado.
Hello, my name is Josie Castaldo of the Bureau of Surface Water and Pretreatment Permitting, and I am the case manager for the Joint Meeting of Essex and Union Counties, abbreviated to Joint Meeting, and the City of Elizabeth CSO permits. I'd like to give you some background on the subject of today's hearing. The renewal of the NIGPTES permits for the Joint Meeting Permit Number NJ0024741 and the City of Elizabeth Permit Number NJ0108782. The draft permits were issued on May 9, 2023. Both are posted on the NJDEP's Division of Water Quality CSO website. As stated in the draft permits, the common period will end on 11:59, at 11:59 on July 14, 2023, in accordance with NJAC 714A-15.10 and 15.14. The permits issued are individual NIGPTES surface water permits for the combined sewer system of Elizabeth, which is hydraulically connected to the Joint Meeting Waste Water Treatment Facility. Combined sewer overflows, or CSOs, are discharges from combined sewer systems. Combined sewer systems are sewers that were designed many decades ago to collect rainwater and snowmelt runoff, domestic sewage, and industrial wastewater in the same pipe. Combined sewer systems are still present in older cities in the state. Joint Meeting owns and operates a waste water treatment plant named the Edward P. Decker Secondary Waste Water Treatment Facility. The facility treats wastewater collected in a 65-square-mile service area in northern New Jersey, which includes the city of Elizabeth as a customer community. The Joint Meeting service area is primarily separately sewered areas, with the only confirmed combined sewer area in the system located within the city of Elizabeth. Joint Meeting does not own or operate any CSO outfalls. The city of Elizabeth encompasses approximately 12.3 square miles in Union County, New Jersey. Elizabeth does not own or operate any waste water treatment facilities. Dry weather wastewater flows from Elizabeth are conveyed to the Joint Meeting Waste Water Treatment Facility. When the conveyance capacity of the collection system and/or the waste water treatment facility is exceeded, excess combined sewage flows pass through 29 CSO outfalls. These outfalls discharge combined sewage into the Arthur Kill and Newark Bay, which are classified as saline estuary III category II waters, and the Elizabeth River, which is classified in different locations of the river as freshwater II non-trout category II waters and saline estuary III category II waters, as per NJDEP's Surface Water Quality Standards. To comply with federal and state CSO regulations, Joint Meeting and Elizabeth have committed to meet the requirements of the presumption approach, which requires elimination or capture of a minimum 85% of the annual average combined sewage collected in Elizabeth's system during wet weather. Presently, Elizabeth's system is at 58.2% capture. The projects, which include both gray and green infrastructure, are projected to achieve 85.1% capture. The projects proposed in the LTCP and in this renewal permit are projected to achieve 65.9% capture in the next five years. A major element of the already submitted long-term control plan includes the Phase One upgrade of the Trenton Avenue Pumping Station, abbreviated to TAPS, which is now completed. This project increased the peak pumping rate of taps to pump at the peak hydraulic capacity. In order to pump at a higher rate, a change in the contractual agreement between Joint Meeting and the City of Elizabeth and upgrades to taps to improve the reliability of the facility were required. Additional projects as part of the LTCP include, but are not limited to, select sewer separation, stormwater control, a green infrastructure pilot program, a new wet weather pump station, a new CSO treatment facility, regulator modifications, and interceptor improvements for additional conveyance. Some of these projects will also help address localized flooding. As per the long-term control plan and proposed NIGPTES permit requirements, these projects are projected to be completed over multiple NIGPTES permit cycles. This same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Marcelo Gracia. After that, we will return to Joe Manick and begin taking testimony.
Hola, mi nombre es Josie Castaldo de la Oficina de Permisos de Aguas de Superficie y Pre-Tatamiento, y soy la administradora de los casos para los permisos de CSO del Joint Meeting de los condados de Essex y Union, abreviado a Joint Meeting, y la ciudad de Elizabeth. Les quiero compartir algo de información de fondo sobre el tema de la audiencia de hoy, la renovación de los permisos del NJPDS para el Joint Meeting, número de permiso NJ0024741, y la ciudad de Elizabeth, número de permiso NJ0108782. Los borradores de estos permisos fueron otorgados el 9 de mayo de 2023. Los dos están publicados en el sitio web de CSO de la División de Calidad de Agua del NJDEP. Como se indica en los borradores de los permisos, el periodo de comentarios terminará el 14 de julio de 2023 a las 11:59 PM, de acuerdo con los artículos 714A 15.10 y 15.14 del Código Administrativo de Nueva Jersey. Los permisos otorgados son permisos individuales de superficie de NJPDS para el Sistema de Alcantrillado Combinado de Elizabeth, que está igualmente conectado a la planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales de Joint Meeting. Los desbordamientos de alcantrillado combinado, o CSO, son descargas de sistemas de alcantrillado combinado. Los sistemas de alcantrillado combinado son encanterillas que se diseñaron hace décadas para recolectar el agua de lluvia y de hielo, aguas residuales domésticas, y aguas residuales industriales en la misma tubería. Los sistemas de alcantrillado combinado todavía están presentes en algunas ciudades más antiguas del estado. Joint Meeting posee y opera una planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales llamada la Instalación y Tratamiento Secundario de Aguas Residuales Edward P. Decker. La instalación trata aguas residuales recolectadas en un área de servicio de 65 millas cuadradas en el norte de Nueva Jersey, cual incluye las ciudades de Elizabeth como una comunidad de clientes. El área de servicio de Joint Meeting es principalmente áreas de alcantrilladas separadas, con la única área de alcantrillado combinado confirmada localizada dentro de la ciudad de Elizabeth. Joint Meeting no posee ni opera desagües de CSO. La ciudad de Elizabeth engloba aproximadamente 12.3 millas cuadradas en el condado de Union, Nueva Jersey. Elizabeth no posee ni opera instalaciones de tratamientos de aguas residuales. Los flujos de aguas residuales durante tiempo seco de Elizabeth son transportados a la planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales de Joint Meeting. Cuando se excede la capacidad de transporte del sistema de recolección y/o la planta de tratamientos de aguas residuales, el exceso de aguas residuales combinadas pasa por 29 desagües y desbordamientos de alcantrillado combinado. Esos desagües vienen a aguas residuales combinadas al Arthur Kill y la bahía de Newark. Cuyos aguas se clasifican en la categoría de estadios saline III categoría II, y el río Elizabeth, cuyos aguas se clasifican en diferentes porciones de río como categoría aguas frescas II, category II, y categoría estadios saline III categoría II, según los standards de la calidad del agua de superficie del NJDEP. Para cumplir con las regulaciones estatales y federales de CSO, Joint Meeting y Elizabeth se han comprometido a cumplir con los requisitos del enfoque de presencia que exige la eliminación o la capción de un mínimo de 85% del promedio anual de aguas residuales combinadas recolocadas por el sistema de Elizabeth durante tiempo lluvioso. En la actualidad, el nivel de capción de Elizabeth es el 58.2%. Los proyectos que incluyen infraestructura gris y verde se prevén captar el 85.1%. Los proyectos propuestos en el Plan de Control a largo plazo y en este renuevo de permisos se prevén captar el 65.9% en los siguientes cinco años. Un elemento importante en el Plan de Control a largo plazo que ya ha sido sometido incluye la primera fase de la mejora de la estación de bombeo Trenton Avenue, abreviada TAPS, que ya ha sido completada. Este proyecto ha aumentado la tasa máxima de bombeo de TAPS para bombear a la capacidad hidráulica máxima. Para bombear a ritmo más alto, fue requerido un cambio al acuerdo contractual entre Joint Meeting y la ciudad de Elizabeth, y las mejoras de TAPS para mejorar la fiabilidad de la instalación. Proyectos adicionales como parte del Plan de Control a largo plazo incluyen, pero no se limitan, la separación de selectos alcantrillados, control de aguas pluviales, un programa piloto de infraestructura verde, una nueva estación de bombeo durante tiempo lluvioso, una nueva planta de tratamiento de CSO, modificaciones del regulador, y mejoras del interceptor para transporte adicional. Algunos de esos proyectos también ayudarán con las inmunaciones localizadas. Según el Plan de Control a largo plazo y los requisitos propuestos de los permisos de NJPDS, se prevén financiar estos proyectos entre varios ciclos de permisos de NJPDS. Esta misma información que acabo de leer ahora se haría en español por Marcelo Gracia. Después, volvemos con Joe Manick y empezaremos a tomar testimonios.
All right, thank you. We will begin now taking testimony. I'm looking in the chat and I don't see anyone has signed up, so if you'd like to say something at this point, please put your name in, and we will recognize you and call on you. If you have joined by phone and you would like to speak, please just go right ahead. It looks like you have priority if you want. All right, I see Suzanne Atman has entered her name in the chat. Please go right ahead.
Again, Joe and all, thank you for having this hearing and for all the hard work by the NJDEP and the permit holder. I'm gonna just take you through some of the comments I made this morning, but just to emphasize, reemphasize. So we are, we're very glad to read that in the final permit for Gutenberg-North Bergen MUA that the DP is developing separate guidance document around public engagement to ensure that the public is engaged as equitably transparently as possible. And so we just ask that this guidance document be released in a timely way so that it can be leveraged as implementation happens, so that could be releasing it perhaps concurrently with the final permit or, right, within, certainly in time for the implementation schedule, but ideally a few months before that, so that the supplemental team has time to get organized and the long-term control plan coordinator can be hired and all of that good stuff. And also, we do request that you include stakeholders in the final development of this guidance as you draft it. You know, as you know, we have a lot of ideas and recommendations and are happy to roll up our sleeves and help with that. And in our written comments, we'll repeat again what are some of our specific recommendations around that. For this permit, there are 29 CSO outfalls, as Josie mentioned, into the water bodies surrounding Elizabeth, and therefore, these water bodies are being impacted by pollution more than water bodies in the region. So while we're glad to see that a reasonable amount of activity has been completed or will be completed in the first five years, about $26 million of construction, it's still disappointing to read that the annual average combined sewage collected in the system during wet weather by the end of the first five years will only be 69%, and that area will have to wait till 2045 to reach the minimum 85% capture. This is a long way away, and it, you know, it has a big impact on water bodies and humans and the potential for combined sewer flooding into streets and homes. In terms of, sorry, financing, so if the reason that these timelines are so lengthened is due to financing, if that's a hindrance, as you know, there are new federal funding opportunities that were instituted after the long-term control plans were drafted, and permit holders can take advantage of them right now through the water bank. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity in terms of federal funding, and this can help to reduce, shorten those timelines while enabling affordability for all community members. There's also technical support funding that the EPA has that permit holders can apply for to take advantage of and help them develop a strong financial capability analysis. So we highly encourage that permit holders take advantage of the EPA's technical assistance funding on that. That's described in the EPA's 2023 Clean Water Act Financial Capability Assessment Guidance, which also has great strategies that permit holders can utilize around innovative financing. And knowing that connecting this funding to the ability to shorten timelines is so critical, is there a way for the DP to more actively encourage this? And can the DP create guidance, just as you are with public engagement, a separate guidance document to help the permit holders access this innovative funding more readily, easily? We, as you know, are very happy to help with that, help craft that guidance, so please tap in if you move ahead with that. In addition to including water bank funding in the affordability calculation, the permit holder should include the impact on affordability and corresponding timeframe that implementation of an equitable stormwater fee would have. that implementation of an equitable stormwater fee would have. So can the permit holder be required to take these steps? Can it be included in the guidance? In this case of this permit, would it be possible to ask the Joint Meeting of Essex and Union Counties to undertake this project for the City of Elizabeth so that the cost would be spread out over all of Joint Meeting's customers and not just Elizabeth's? And in this way, you would have the same total costs spread out over more users and those users would also have a higher median household income. And that should improve the affordability calculation considerably. Josie mentioned that these control control strategies will impact local flooding. Can you, DP, share more details on how the control strategies will impact local flooding, not just the CSOs into the water bodies? That would be really helpful. We urge you to work with the permit holder to leverage green infrastructure and fast-track more green infrastructure in the first five years. This is again another avenue for shortening timelines to achieving the eighty-five percent capture goal. As Nicole shared earlier, it's lower cost and high-impact strategy. Sorry, did I hit my limit? Oh, um, okay. And yeah, and providing guidance also on how these gray infrastructure projects can simultaneously incorporate green infrastructure projects. Permit holders might need guidance on that technique, on those strategies. Is that something that the NJDP can can support? And yeah, just a little bit more in terms of green infrastructure. Could the permit holder explore conducting a green infrastructure feasibility study to determine locations with a large amount of impervious cover that might benefit from implementation of green infrastructure projects to address flooding? So this would be a study done across Elizabeth. And the Green Infrastructure Pilot Program that you mentioned, is there a way to 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 ensure that there's a benefit from this in terms of addressing flooding? So how can we determine that this pilot is actually addressing the flooding and that it is reducing the volume? Is that something that can be measured and reported back? And again, working with the community to collaboratively identify green infrastructure projects is critical. There's some very strong community organizations there who are doing this work and we hope that you will and the permit holder will continue to work with them. Okay.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Suzanne, someone else is on the line and we can hear your conversation. If you could mute yourself, I'd appreciate it. Suzanne, please continue.
Yeah, so that's it. Thank you so much and we look forward to your comments. We'll be sending our written comments. And again, please tap into us to help finalize the guidance for the public engagement process. And if you would like to develop a financial capability analysis guidance or financing guidance, please let us know. Thank you so much, Joe.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. We'll have those responses to those in the official response to comments document that we issued with the final decision document, as we did for Gottenburg and North Bergen. I'm looking now in the chat and I don't see any other names of anyone else who would like to speak. I'll give it a few more minutes and we'll just put ourselves in hold for a couple of minutes and I'll check back in in maybe four or five minutes. And if no one has anything, then we will conclude the hearing. But we'll just wait until, say, six forty-two. All right, it is six forty-two. I'd like to just put out a last call. If anyone has a desire to present testimony right now, please put your name in the chat and we'll recognize you and give you an opportunity. I'll just give it another one minute and if no one does, then I will come back and we will close the hearing. All right, everyone, I have six, excuse me, six forty-three on my clock. It looks like no one else has any comments, so I'm going to formally close the public hearing. Thank you all for your patience and your time. Have a good evening.